I'd like to call the October 20th Planning Commission hearing to order. Heather, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Tarley?
Here.
Mr. Granger?
Here.
Mr. Cle?
Here.
Ms. Macbeth?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Sylvie Kloski.
Our first item is the approval of the minutes of our September 15th regular meeting. Are there any additions or changes?
Move to approve the minutes of September 15, 2021, as submitted.
Second?
Mr. Tarley?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Cle?
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
There are no consent agenda items, so that brings us to our public hearings, which I'm assuming will be presented as a unit, Erin, PCR 21-15 and 16.
Good afternoon. The Colonial Williamsburg Foundation is proposing to rezone a portion, approximately 1.86 acres of the property at 400 South Nassau Street, which is across the street from the expanded art museums and adjacent to the recently constructed colonnade from Colonial Williamsburg. The rezoning will be from Colonial Williamsburg area to museum support to accommodate the construction of the proposed Colin G. and Nancy N. Campbell Archaeology Center. The proposed rezoning will include a portion of the lot to the north, 202 West Francis Street, to be combined into the property at 400 South Nassau Street. This would establish the northern property line at the edge of the 18th century site of Ireland Street and leaves the Custis site intact. The second part of this request is for a special use permit for the net removal of 54 parking spaces in the downtown parking district to accommodate the construction of the Colin G. and Nancy N. Campbell Archaeology Center. The construction of the new center will result in the loss of 73 spaces on the site. The parking area to the south will be restripped to reclaim 18 spaces, resulting in a net loss of 54 parking spaces in the downtown parking area. The five-year plan for the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation is to create a new lot on the Bodata and Lafayette Street area to provide an additional 469 spaces to accommodate guests and visitors. Conceptual plans for this layout were included in the packet and are seen here on the screen. This is the existing conditions and the proposed parking area. The 2021 comprehensive plan designates this parcel as Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area and Colonial Williamsburg Support, which is defined in the plan as follows. The Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area land use encompasses the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area and is established to preserve, protect, and maintain the restored area's distinctive character and historic importance. The CW zoning district implements this category. The Colonial Williamsburg Support use includes a variety of commercial and industrial facilities that support the Colonial Williamsburg Historic District's function. The Visitor Center, Bruton Heights Education Campus, and the Colonial Williamsburg Nursery fall under this category. The MS zoning district implements this category. This property is surrounded by the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area and the Colonial Williamsburg Support Parks and Parkway and Recreation in the 2021 Comprehensive Plan. This property is located in two zoning districts, the Williamsburg Historic Area CW and the Museum Support District MS. The statement of intent for the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area reads, "This district is established to preserve, protect, and maintain the unique character and historic importance of the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area." The statement of intent for the Museum Support District reads, "This district is established to allow uses that are related to and support the function of the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area. The most intensive uses may be allowed with special use permits to ensure compatibility with the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area and surrounding residential neighborhoods." This property is surrounded by the Colonial National Parkway, the Museum Support District, Limited Business District LB1, and Colonial Williamsburg Historic District. The Architectural Review Board provided a conceptual review and approval of the plans at their September 14, 2021, meeting. The Site Plan Review Committee held a meeting on September 15 to review the proposed rezoning and special use permit. The applicant stated that a waiver to screening requirements would be submitted with the final site plan for this project and would also include bike racks and refuse disposal details. The committee was supportive of the rezoning, the special use permit, and the screen waiver. The applicant is seeking a rezoning for approximately 1.86 acres and a special use permit to remove 54 parking spaces from the downtown parking district to accommodate the construction of the new archaeology center. This proposed rezoning is in keeping with the stated intent of the Museum Support District and consistent with previous rezonings in the area. The construction of the new center will result in a loss of 73 spaces on the site, and the parking area to the south will be restripped to reclaim 18 of those spaces, resulting in a net loss of 54 parking spaces. The Colonial Williamsburg Foundation's five-year plan includes creating a new lot in the Bodata not Lafayette Street area to provide an additional 469 spaces to accommodate guests and visitors. Construction of the new archaeology center allows the facilities of the Bodata Lafayette Street area to be relocated, allowing for the future parking expansion. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of PCR 21-015, the rezoning of approximately 1.6 acres from Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area to museum support at 400 South Nassau Street, and PCR 21-016, the special use permit for the net removal of 54 parking spaces in the downtown parking district to accommodate the construction of the Colin G. and Nancy N. Campbell Archaeology Center at 400 South Nassau Street. Staff is available if you have any questions, and the applicant and the applicant's representative are also present.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Erin?
Could you tell us about the, you mentioned the screening that the Site Plan Committee...
Certainly.
Can you give some details on what that was about?
So, there is, I don't know if it's a good slide of it up here. This is probably the best representation. There is a large area that is actually part of the Colonial Parkway, and we have a transitional screening requirement and a setback requirement. And there is an allowance in the zoning ordinance to waive transitional screening in the event that it may be requested. They're asking for a waiver in this area because there is so much space between the actual property line and the Colonial Parkway, and the thought being there is that the screening is actually existing on the Park Service property.
Oh, it's just kind of that corner?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Erin? Okay. Then we will open the public hearing if the applicant would like to come forward and say
You did such a great job, I just want to thank her. I don't have a whole lot to add. My name's Don Cramule, principal in charge of this project, representing Colonial Williamsburg and architecture firm Clark Nixon. It's good to see, a long time ago. So, basically, I'll just say that the design of this project was meant to really blend with the surrounding architecture, particularly the north side, the museum campus, and to blend in with the setting. In terms of the overall massing, the team worked very hard with Colonial Williamsburg's building committee to make sure that the scale of it was appropriate and that we were able to maximize parking by doing a two-story structure while still maintaining the surrounding scale of the museum campus. And we're here to answer any questions.
As a public hearing, not usually in a Q and A format, but when we get to discussion, if we need something, we'll ask, that's for sure. So, the public hearing is still open. If anyone else would like to come forward and speak to the commission on this item? Not seeing anyone come forward, then I will close the public hearing and open up the discussion for commission members.
I'll jump in if I may. I think it's a good project. I like it. It looks nice. Parking is something that we're going to always struggle with. I like the notion of the new lot near Bodata and Lafayette, but it's a five-year plan, and I have lots of five-year plans that don't always happen.
Yes.
And I wonder how long we really think that's going to be, and I also wonder whether or not it's going to be a paid lot. So, those are the questions that kind of come into my mind.
Sure, sure. And so, I have some bullet points, but just since we're talking about that one, yes, so the removal of parking with a promise that new parking is in the five-year plan, that's not sort of part of the contingency that that actually happens, so this could actually never happen. Correct, Erin?
Yes, there are no conditions currently.
Right, okay. So, beyond, hey Connor, other issues about anything here?
We reviewed this at the Site Plan Committee, and I agree with Mr. Granger's comments, but I also took to comment that this will be a fantastic addition to that area, kind of mirror what's across the street architecturally, which really opens that area up for more foot traffic, but certainly losing the 50-plus parking spots. You know, I don't know what the timeline is on when this construction would begin, and is there any idea on that, Erin?
Not that staff is aware of right now. They are pursuing the special use permit. If that's approved, they would still have to go through a Site Plan Review process, which would include finalized engineering details and things like that, so I imagine it's a little ways out. It's not an imminent project.
But I'm certainly in favor for it, but I do recognize the issue, perceived issue of the lack of parking.
I'll jump in on that, too. We had some conversations about that at ARB, even though parking is kind of outside the purview, and we pointed out that that parking lot was employee parking up until, what, a couple of years ago, two or three years ago? And a couple of people, myself included, mentioned that, you know, I'm kind of a museum nerd, so I park in that lot a lot, and I've never seen it close to full. So, you know, there's capacity, some capacity there, but I'm very sensitive to that. Also, we've heard, you know, many, many public statements that CW has a goal of creating sort of an entrance corridor there and an entrance corridor on the north side, so I can see that there is motivation. I think this is more than just a promise and a hope that there's going to be parking on the Bodata side. I mean, you know, I've had conversations with folks, and I feel comfortable that that really is, you know, that really is in the plan because of the multiple entry point concept as they move away from the Visitor Center concept. So, while it's a concern, I feel comfortable that, you know, it'll be a short-term concern.
So, we've started having pretty granular, I think, discussion about the SUP, which is the second piece, where the rezoning is the first, and go back to that, but I have actually received inquiries as to why we're entertaining a rezoning one month after we approved a comp plan that we worked four years on, and that this was nowhere on any of those discussions. And the flip side of that, or the counterfactual, is that we just, last month, recertified that this should be the zoning that it is currently. So, as a planning commission, you know, the comp plan is meant to be this pretty high bar of a guide for us, especially when it's the first month of operation. That, to me, seems to be a concern that at least we should be thinking about and discussing at some point.
Well, maybe that's a point where I'll jump in. I love this project, first of all. I think this is fabulous. I think having, kind of strengthening the sort of museum precinct down there makes all the sense in the world. I love the idea of celebrating the role of this institution in the history of archaeology, the practice of archaeology in North America in the 20th and the 21st centuries. That's all fabulous and, I think, really essential, and so for both intellectual and sentimental reasons, I think it's a great project. I do have some, oh, and I also, I love that it honors Colin and Nancy. I mean, I think that's another asset of this whole thing. My concerns have to do with what Elaine has just raised, which is to say, I'm not so worried about the parking. I think the parking is not a, there clearly is some slack in that particular lot, and I also love the idea of redeveloping the Bodata parcel as additional parking. So, I think this is something that, it seems to be part of a larger strategic plan, and again, something that I think we ought to celebrate and support. What's harder for me to support is encroaching on the historic area, and it seems to me that there's essentially two reasons, given in the application anyway, for encroaching on the historic area. And one is to minimize the reduction of parking, and I've already kind of told you I'm not too worried about that, but then the other is essentially a design one, which is to say the building, this very large building, is trying to kind of be symmetrical on an axis, and that axis is defined by the new entrance to the Duett Wallace. And so, that's a choice, but it's a design choice. And so, we're left here, really for the first time, having to kind of bring design into the conversation in a land use consideration and a land use hearing. So, if we think that the design is really strong, I think I could support the idea of doing this, but I think right now, I'm not as thrilled with this design as a design, and I think there are other solutions that would not only not encroach on the historic area, but also allow this part of the historic area to remain, to retain its integrity, right? In other words, so when you're looking from Francis Street to the south, right now you have the public hospital and then the sort of the back wall of the Duett Wallace, but it's a brick wall that doesn't sort of announce itself as a modern thing. It's only when you get around on the other side that you say, oh, holy Moses, this is an exciting and modern building. So, that's happening on one side of Nassau Street, and now on the other, we're going to have a more forthright, really, presentation of a nonhistoric building. So, that gives me some pause, I guess, as a commissioner and as somebody who cares very much about the built environment in town. And it seems to me that in this presentation, the two strongest elevations are the ones that are facing south towards the parking lot, which is great, and then facing east toward the Parkway. I'm not going to say I don't care about that, but it's not, it doesn't worry me as much as the ones that face the historic area. So, I want very much for this project to go forward. I want very much for us to get to a place today that we can support it and endorse it wholeheartedly, but given that this is ultimately coming down to a design decision, I'm not, I'm not quite prepared to do that just yet. I mean, I hope that we can get there even before the end of this hearing, but I'm not quite there yet, and that's where my sort of discomfort is with this. Again, I think this is an essential project, and I want to do what I can to make this thing happen and make it be the success it needs to be, and the success it deserves to be, I'll say, too. But I worry about where it is and the way that it appears from the north.
Other items of discussion on the zoning aspect of this?
I believe that the statement of intent are pretty consistent. I recognize the sensitivity, but I support the zoning for the historic area, so to support the mission of CW, Colonial Williamsburg, and they're making the zoning requests, so I feel comfortable with that.
I tend not to be as concerned with the timing that you raised, Chair Macbeth, because, you know, a lot of these things are arbitrary. I mean, we could have, if we were not so diligent and professional, we might have finished the comp plan a year earlier, but we were very diligent and professional, so we took a lot of time with it. So, I, you know, in projects like this, this new proposed museum have a lot of moving parts to put in place before a proposal can come in, and so I see the optics of it. You know, the ink's not dry. I just got my final copy of the 21 plan 15 minutes ago, and now we're talking about changing it already. So, I understand that, but again, I'm not too concerned because of the realities of timing.
Yeah, and first off, I'm jealous that you got your final one. Mine's still in the car, missing a few extra pages there. But I guess one of the questions, just, I mean, just pulling on the different threads that are here, and since I'm not on site plan, maybe folks who are on that could maybe share some light on this, shed some light on this for me, but in looking at some of the different plaits, the property line, and I'm trying to find the right one, there's a shadow, oh, I finally am here, that the property line appears to be with like a foot from one of the defined archaeological sites of the Custis property. And my thought is, you know, yes, I mean, I really miss the archaeological museum that used to be at Carter's Grove. I mean, I think having this here downtown, showing it, I mean, I totally support the museum's plural campus being growing and being a thriving hub for CW and for our community as a whole, but, you know, I drive past the Custis site maybe four times a day, you know, and that itself has become a site of significant activity over the recent years in the archaeological perspective of it. I mean, the eventual, you know, maybe the Mars family has another gift that they could, you know, do a build-out. How is this property line literally appearing to be like within a foot of this one archaeological site going to impact the use of that property as CW museum, you know, as its core historic CW property? Was that discussed at all during sort of site plan for those people?
I think it's discussed briefly, but I think it was set forth in the application, the new property line respects the Custis site, locating the property line just south of the southern border of the Custis site. So, I mean, we just discussed it briefly.
Yeah, I think we just discussed that it would respect it. I'm not sure we talked about the proximity of within the...
Correct.
...of the...
Right.
I'll discuss that part.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm thinking that this has the potential for being something that is actually a built-out site after the archaeology is complete, and given the property line, that may make that impossible to do.
Yeah, and that's a real concern. It's also the applicant's business decision, I guess, right? Is it something that we, as a city or as this commission, should second-guess? Although, having said that, I think if this commission, what was it, 40 years ago when the Duett Wallace was originally built, and they came and said, well, we want to go through a middle hospital down the basement and up some stairs, and if we had said, well, that's a bad idea, they wouldn't all be kicking themselves today over that. So, maybe it is our place, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a conversation, you know, in this case, the public conversation. This is just an opportunity for another kind of round of review to ensure that this is as good as it can be.
And to address that property line issue today.
Would people want to hear from the applicant? Okay, so would someone from your team come forward and talk to this?
You have to vote on that usually, or do they just come forward?
Yep.
Yeah, as the lead design architect, we definitely want to address the questions that are being raised, and these are all the things that we've been talking about for the last six months to nine months, I guess it is. And, you know, first, Mr. Cle, the axes, I think it's important to address as well, and the importance of that axis really has to do with creating an entrance to Colonial Williamsburg and creating a sense of arrival and a really clear wayfinding between the two museums. So, it's about creating an experience that visitors know that they've arrived in the museum campus, and then they enter into the historic area. So, that's a part of that thought process, that it was really important for the Colonial Williamsburg Museum campus to have that connection across the street, so you'd always have that synergy between the two buildings. There's an educational opportunity between the two spaces, so there's kind of an interactive component to each museum campus or each museum building. So, the ability to kind of go back and forth between that was really important for Colonial Williamsburg. In terms of ramifications of that decision, you know, the proximity to the historic areas becomes really critical, and how do you address that in a really sensitive way to the historic area, to Francis Street, and to the views from Francis Street? So, we've worked extensively with Jack Gary, who's the director of archaeology and on that Custis site daily, thinking about what are the most historic aspects of that site. So, he's going to talk about that. But in terms of the proximity of the building to Custis Square, we've set the building back about 50 to 60 feet, so there's a lot of transitional landscape elements that happen between the building itself and the historic Custis site. We have what's called a donor courtyard, which is a series of landscape walls and vegetation that start to screen the building, and that screening of newly planted trees is going to be part of the issue of addressing the views from Francis Street and the historic area. There's also the nature of that facade that is treated very differently than the south facade, so we have a very historic fenestration. We use arched openings with rubbed-brick arches that really respect the historic architecture. So, it's not a modern building from that north facade, it's really trying to be as quiet and backdrop as much as the Duett. And then in terms of additional screening, there's also a very dense forest for half of the building, so about 100 feet is a very dense forest that screens the building entirely. There's also a topographic quality to the Custis site itself, which the grade drops about 20 feet down to Francis Street, so if you're driving on a car, you might not even see the building once you get east of the center of that property. So, if you know that Francis Street, it kind of drops down. And then, so there's the screening of the forest, the screening of the vegetation of the donor courtyard, and then Custis site itself also has screening, but I'll let Jack talk about it.
Good afternoon. Jack Gary, I'm the director of archaeology for Colonial Williamsburg. Yeah, I appreciate the comments about when the Custis Square site gets built out, when we restore it, and it'll be a long process, and one of the pieces of the restoration will be to restore the trees that bounded the property. There's actually a historic screen that will now be put in place because we're respecting that boundary with the siding of the building and even really respecting Ireland Street as an additional buffer in there. We'll have that space, we'll have the trees restored as part of the restoration plan. And I think we also have a real advantage with the proximity to Custis and the archaeology center in that this is a site that's, as you know, you drive by it four times a day, it's large, and it's one that we're probably going to be working on beyond even the span of the current project, and we'll be restoring elements of it as we go. So, we've really thought of it as an opportunity to have almost an outdoor classroom at Custis Square to showcase restoration and archaeology. You get to see it in the archaeology center. You then move outside directly from the center into this new space that's being restored, and so we felt we had a real advantage to that proximity as well, although recognizing the close proximity of a modern building to a very historic site. So, that was one of our ways of trying to mitigate that.
Thanks.
Other questions, comments?
Maybe let's just come back to the little pavilion on the west side. This is clearly meant to be another kind of screen. We're talking about screens and trying to hide this big, this big building, and I think already that's telling us something, that we've got this big thing that we want to do, that we need to hide from the historic area, or need to at least disguise. And, you know, I'm not... And, you know, I'm not, I, Jack, I take your point about the landscaping and the distance. And I do think that will help, I do think that will help sort of disguise this a little bit. I'd like to see even a little bit more done, especially for that, that two-story section is going to be tall, that is going to be visible. I think the one-story section will recede where you've got those arches. So I think that's something that also needs to be worried about a little bit more. But then there's this, this west elevation, which is sort of crammed in there and between the main building and the little, and the arcade. And maybe I'll just put this to, to the, to the designer. I appreciate what you're trying to do. I worry that it's going to feel like it is this sort of impressive facade that's kind of just laid up against the building. And in fact, I don't know what the depth is, but it doesn't look like it's more than 12 or 16 feet. So it's trying to announce itself as a kind of impressive country house, but then it turns out it's just this, it's just a billboard essentially with restrooms in the wings. And then it's also, I won't say it's encroached on, but it's crowded by the arcade. Do you have any concerns about that experience and the sort of... Have you tried other ways to solve this problem? Let me put it that way, other than just kind of sticking up this, the kind of pattern book facade on, on the front of the building, on the west side of the building?
I think it's a really good point. And we've worried about the scale and the, the space that's behind the arcade.
Yeah.
I mean, part of that was based on the decision to make those two arcade pieces as a sense of arrival, so people know that they've arrived in the historic area. The decision to do the amenities building as a Georgian colonial piece was very strategic and defined in terms of its placement and trying to respond to the Georgian colonial architecture. And we worked very closely with Colonial Williamsburg to design that piece and with the historic architect on staff at Colonial Williamsburg. That was designed to be almost a teaching tool in itself of the colonial architecture. And it doesn't really hide it, the building behind it. It's really meant to be part of the experience and part of the arrival and also be an amenities building that people recognize as a place to go before they embark on their tour of Colonial Williamsburg. So part of the challenges that Colonial Williamsburg is dealing with is how do you create a new arrival for the 21st century tourist? And this, this location is, is doing that, and it's doing it in a number of ways, using historic architecture as kind of the cues of where to go. So the west side is for the Duette, the entrance to the Decorative Arts Museum. The east side is to be an amenities building where you can get tickets and use the restroom outside before going into the museum. And the architecture was designed to kind of be a cue of where to go. So somebody kind of says, "Okay, I know to arrive between these two arcades. I can go east into this amenities building or west and buy a ticket from a person." So it's really meant to be kind of a wayfinding as well as an educational tool.
One thing I'll just observe is, you know, there's of course 90-whatever years of, of doing exactly what you're describing, which is to say, trying to respond to the existing town in a way that makes sense and that, that helps people find their way around and understand how to, how to get from point A to point B, and what's important and what's primary and what's secondary. And, and what the, what the early guys did was to say, "Okay, the, the historic area is sacrosanct. We're not going to design new buildings that are in that kind of 1750s and 60s idiom, because that'll be confusing ultimately." And so when you look at something like the Inn, they said, "We're gonna, we're gonna wind the clock forward a little bit, and we're gonna make it look like it's the early 19th century now." To say, "Yes, this is important and it's compatible, but it's not part of that. It's something else, it's set aside." And so even though that's subtle, and most visitors don't, I don't think, you know, they couldn't utter that sentence, probably most people in this room, you know, don't recognize that in an articulate way. It's still, it still makes sense of the place. So I, I would just throw that out there as something else to consider as you continue to refine this. There's a, there's a, there's a strong case that was made by the guys in the 20s and 30s to be distinctive from, still compatible, that's the hard part, compatible but distinctive from what's going on in Duke of Gloucester Street. And so as you refine this, I'd encourage you to bear that in mind, I guess.
I think it's a very good point. We'll work closely with the building committee with Colonial Williamsburg and the trustees who really help steer the direction. Appreciate the comments.
Just in terms of the process here, there's two pieces in front of us. One is the rezoning, and one is a special use permit. Use of a special use, or granting of a special use permit can be granted with conditions or if there are concerns. At this point, there seems to be no conditions on the special use permit.
And the special use permit is purely for the parking, right? In other words, it is not, they're of course related, but they really are two different things, right?
They, well, yes, yes and no. I mean, in terms of, if I'm, with regard to some of the questions that you've been asking in the past five to 10 minutes, is that the special use permit, for me, if I'm understanding this correctly, is that the final site plan will be allowed to not have 54 parking spots that it currently has.
Yeah.
So in turn to that, do you want more, you know, landscaping? Do you want, have a different, you know, that, those are the, you know, some sort of different styling that is going to make things compensate for the fact that there's this thing that's being removed? Or my, I used to serve on the site plan committee, I haven't for a long time, but there is that negotiation of, yes, you don't, you want to have this thing moved over here, okay, that's fine, but then you need to have other kinds of things. And there's none of that here, but if there are concerns, that could be added, so. We can address them separately.
Well, I, as you've heard, I am concerned about the, the reduction, you know, the reduction in the size of the historic area. And I, there's a part of, there's a thing that's been nagging at me this whole time, which is the fact that, of course, Colin Campbell, who 15 years ago enlarged the size of the historic area to, to protect the edges better. And, and that just, I'm, I'm having a hard time sort of moving past that. I think the way I'm trying to get comfort with it is the knowledge that it's not like we're taking out a section of the historic area to put it open for private development or something, it's, it's museum support. So if there's anything that you'd like at the edge, museum support is it. But as I've said, I, I think this ultimately comes down to parking and design. And I can easily imagine, even if, even if the, the sort of pavilion at the front stayed the same and on axis, the entire building sort of shifting to the south so that, both to minimize, you know, and further downhill, to minimize its, its appearance from Francis Street, and then also to significantly reduce the degree to which we have to reduce the size of the historic area. But I, I don't, you know, I don't like to even suggest that, because this is clearly a project that's been in development for a long time. This is really carefully thought through, there's a complete set of drawings, there's a computer model. I, I don't like throwing up a roadblock at this stage in the game, but I am still, I'm, I'm seeing alternatives, I guess is the way to put it, that would solve some of the concerns that we've, or that maybe that I have, have been raising, that I think would, would basically allow this to proceed just about by right.
Well, right, because if you look at that map that we can all see in front of us, you, behind us, there's a big light blue square that could fit that building right there, right now.
Right.
The, the thoroughfare of, would not be seen, the access would not be there, but there's property by right to do this, yes.
But there is this, I mean, I understand also this desire to create a kind of moment, a moment of entry for, for visitors that gets people away from coming in by way of the, the visitor center, which again, I think also makes good sense. There's just, as I said at the beginning, there's so much to, to really like about this project. It's just this little 50-foot strip, and it's all about that, that arcade. If that arcade were 50 feet further south, I don't think we're having this conversation. I mean, we're having a version of it, but it doesn't sort of go along these lines. That's not an option, that, that's all done. But I, I'd like to be more enthusiastic about it, I guess, than I am as a, as a, as a, as a project. I mean, the project itself, the idea of it is, is fabulous and essential. And so maybe in summary, I, I can see supporting entirely PCR 16, the reduction of the parking spaces. I have no objections to that whatsoever. PCR 15 is harder to embrace. And I, I can't quite come up with a condition unless we were to review it again, but, but...
You cannot condition a rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
That's only available through voluntary proffers.
Only the special use permit, it's only the parking. Well.
I guess based upon that, then I would move to recommend approval of 2116.
Seconded.
That's the parking one.
Okay, so 20, I understood, 2116 is the parking. But that is the place where you actually can require some extra things to be done. What you can't, where you cannot do it is in the rezoning, which is 2015, so.
I don't have any intention of asking for anything.
Okay.
Somebody can add that, too.
So you need to, to act on PCR 15 first, because if you don't do that, then the issue of the special use permit becomes moot, so.
All right, that makes sense.
Yes, 15, we need to just work on 15.
I'll retract that.
So how, how much of, because, Dr. Clay, a lot of your, a lot of your comments are related to the, the design, right? So, so the ARB gave a conceptual approval, not a, that wasn't a final, was it?
No, it was conceptual approval.
So how, how much, and we made some recommendations, some specific recommendations, I know, and Mr. Cranby will remember, about, about that front piece. It's not a facade, I'm, I'm not the architect, but you know, you know what, the Georgian, the Georgian piece behind, yeah. So, so how much of that can be resolved by, by the process that still has to be accomplished at ARB? As far as the design, your design concerns about the entire...
Well, I did read the minutes of that meeting, and there were concerns about the screening. And there were some comments, I think, about that, that sort of funny zone in between the arcade and the, and the building. And so I suppose we could put a condition, I mean, the condition is implicit that the ARB will review it and approve it already. And so we don't need to add a condition that says the ARB needs to see it again, because they still haven't given final approval.
Right.
Question is, and I don't feel comfortable, just as a matter of policy, putting a condition on it that says it needs to be redesigned along these lines. That, that I don't think is something that we want to do. I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that. I just don't think that's the right thing to do.
I think, I, I think the applicant is here and they've heard this discussion. And I think they've got the opportunity to sink their teeth into it before they go back to ARB and really see what they can do if, if it's feasible and, and the changes. And it's a small town, we can have conversations and, and things like that, and try and facilitate it so that when it does get to ARB for final approval, it can be all that we hope it is.
Yeah.
I will say that the fire station, the initial conceptual of the fire station, several members of the ARB were very much against it. And by the time we had worked, you know, sort of collaboratively with the designers, they were, everyone was very much for it. So, so that, that process there does have impact.
Yeah, that's a good point, too. It, it's nice to see things work out through the development of ideas and mutually working together as opposed to, no, we're not going to do this unless you do this.
Right.
And so...
No, I agree totally.
I, I think this is an opportunity to, to move in that direction. And you've got some great ideas and some valid points, and I expect that they've been heard and will be explored.
Yeah, so I mean, I, when I first saw this, I thought, totally not controversial and totally great, you know? And that it'd be great to have a archaeology museum back there. I totally appreciate the idea that it might be 30 years before a full restoration of that site could happen between either the finances or the archaeology that's being done and, and the use of it as a living classroom and all that kind of stuff. But I don't want that, the ability to do that 30 years from now to be taken away by having this, this property line too tight. So I have to trust, you know, your archaeological sighting of this, even though it looks really close to me on this screen that I have. I think I'm less concerned about this changing from one kind of CW use to a different kind of CW use, because they're going to be planting this big museum on it, you know? It isn't like it's being converted and then it could be a new place for the buses to stop or something like that, right?
It's not a Popeyes.
Yeah, well, well, just, you know, I mean, like, the, with, you know, in the past 10 years, you know, they, there's the, the transportation thing, and then it was spun off, right? So the fact that there's going to be this museum there makes me think that it's, you know, it's different, it rhymes, but different than other parts of the Colonial District and could actually be a hub for good things. I think where there's some concern that I'm sort of hearing from Jeff relative to the ARB, is that, I mean, the ARB states the minimum requirement that any average householder needs to do to paint or re-roof or whatever, and that this is so much more of a prominent thing, that the idea that it's meeting the minimum requirements of ARB or site plan is really not where it should be, that, you know, it should actually have distinctive design and architecture. But that's, that's outside of my purview, my, my expertise.
Yeah, well, I think, one of the things that I think we're seeing is this body is not set up to have this kind of conversation that is ultimately about design. And the only reason design is on the table is because ultimately it's choices made about the design that are kind of forcing it, right? We have to, we have to accept that this is exactly where this needs to be in order to approve this, this application, this, this rezoning. But I think the point is right, that the ARB is the body that is essentially set up to do that. And so if we think this is a good idea, we have to essentially trust that the ARB process will, will, you know, do what it needs to do here. And I think Mr. Granger's point is the right one, that, that it's a small town and these things are iterative. And so we can, we, we are set up for success here. I just want so badly for it to be not just a success, but a, you know, just a major thing that I, you know, I've really thought and worried hard about it and stared at these drawings for a very long time. So, and for all the reasons I said at the beginning, I want this to be a success, because I, I think it's just going to be so important to have this here. So I think maybe we're coming around to a conclusion, it seems to me.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion on 15?
I'll move that we recommend approval of PCR 21-15.
Seconded.
Heather?
Aye.
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 Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Phil Kowalski?
Aye.
Okay, now on 2116, a motion?
Motion to, recommend to approve PCR 16, or 21-16.
Seconded.
Mr. Tarley?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Cle?
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Phil Kowalski?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. There'll be lots of minutes for you all to read through, but I appreciate the discussion that we've had up here with our colleagues. Okay, this brings us to our open forum. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to the com- If anyone would like to come forward and speak to the commission on anything that is in front of us today or coming in the future. Not seeing anyone coming forward. I will close the open forum. We have no other business today unless people have new business to bring up, anything new. Okay, so we do have a meeting next Wednesday, work session. I will be here at 4 o'clock where we will be looking at the Neighborhood Balance Committee report. And currently, we do not have any public hearings scheduled for November, so we may have, we may not have a meeting that day. Unless there's anything else, then we are adjourned.